Speaker of the Tyler ISD Board and Trustee was previously called the board. The presence of the board has been established. A meeting has been duly called and a notice of meeting has been posted at the time of the manner required. Thanks everybody for coming out tonight here to reconvene from executive. If you would like to follow us, we'll come right into the prayer and pledge given by Mr. Martinez.
Thank you. Let's pray. We have a link called "We Love You." We come here today asking for guidance, wisdom, and support. Continue to remind us that all we do here today and all that we accomplish is for you and your children.
Uncertain days of illness and anxiety can be frightening. We know you're in control and we ask for healing and tranquility. Not only for the sick, but for the caregivers who take risks every day in their work to provide healing and comfort. Lord, we realize that you have created all people in your image without exception. Please open our eyes to see the dignity and worth of every person. Help us to understand that we are all your children, brothers and sisters in the same family. Help us to hear the voices of those who have been wounded by discrimination and attitudes of the past. We ask for the courage to heal those wounds, to build bridges, to forgive and to be forgiven, and to have empathy and compassion. We realize that you gave your son to the world as a gift of hope and a promise of reconciliation. We pray that your spirit will fill us with love and respect for our differences which teach us so much about one another and about you. We ask these things in the name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, thank you for that, Mr. Martinez. We are now at the point of our meeting where we're at public participation. And typically don't do this, but I'm going to read a little statement so everybody knows how we conduct our public participation. We are now at the scheduled time in our agenda for public comment. The board wishes to hear your thoughts and concerns. And as per board policy, all speakers must have submitted a speaker participation form at least 10 minutes prior to the start of our regular session. We ask those in the audience to refrain from responding to speakers' comments, including cheering and applauding. This will enable the board members to focus their intention entirely on the speaker. Although the board may ask clarifying questions, please be reminded that board members cannot respond to any comments. Tonight, we have 41 individuals signed up to speak. Each of the 41 people will have a minute and 20 seconds to address the board. And the first person speaking is Garnet, Garnet, I can't read your last name, man, but Ruffenti, maybe? But come on up.
My name is Garrett Bonfanti. I am an alumnus who graduated in 2019 after four years of going to REL. I was extremely involved in the school. I was in different clubs, but I was mostly in theater. And I am here today to talk about and to voice my concern about the name of our school. It is of my opinion that now is not only the best time, but the only time for us to change the name and to grow together as a community. And start a new future that we can all participate in. This is an opportunity for our town to turn a new chapter in its life because whether you realize it or not, the name of this school has far-reaching consequences. For example, I go to school at Georgia State University in Atlanta, Georgia. And that is in the shadow of Stone Mountain where 20th century white nationalism and white supremacy was reestablished. And even there, I got looks saying, wow, you guys still have a name after Robert E. Lee? It's not like, sorry. I'm just going to say one thing, and I just want it to be known. I just want us to have it known that we can either leave a legacy for future generations of Tyler recognizing the times of change that are around us, or we can show our kids that we are stuck in our ways, not willing to change. Thank you.
Thanks, Garrett. Okay, next we have Ramona Stanford.
Somebody know me. How y'all doing?
Good.
Good. Good evening. My name is Ramona Stanford, and I'm here this evening to support the name change of Robert E. Lee High School. Robert E. Lee is not a man to be honored by any student of color. My child is being forced to attend a school that bears the name of a Confederate general that cares nothing about her, that degrades her for her beautiful skin she's in, and that is culturally insensitive to students of color. I do not want my child to attend a school bearing the name of anyone that cares nothing about her, her well-being, nor cares nothing about her success. My child is being forced to attend a school that wears the name of a slave owner. He also inherited slaves from his father-in-law, and the will Lee's father-in-law left instruction for him to set them free after five years. But he didn't do that. But this is a man of honor that you want my daughter to pin on her chest? And I think not. Lee beat these slaves unmercifully. This is the kind of person you build statues of, honor him with reverence, and name schools after him, and students of color should be proud.
Five seconds.
At the end of my child's high school career, when she walks the stage to receive her diploma...
Hey, Ramona, I'm so sorry, but we're really trying to keep it at a minute and 20 for everybody.
Okay, well, you probably get the way I feel about the name change.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
Okay.
Thanks for sharing. Okay, we have Eric Archilla. 1999 graduating class. There you go.
Sorry, I have my jacket on, but it is burning up out there. Hi, my name is Eric Archilla. Thank you for letting me speak today about the name Robert E. Lee. Obviously, I wrote a long speech, but I just wanted to get to the point. Robert E. Lee never should have graced the name of a school. He was a traitor. Underneath him, over 300,000 American troops died. He was never given back his citizenship after the war, and in fact, his land was taken, which is now Arlington Cemetery. But all your feelings on Lee aside, here's the main point. If Lee had won, if he had achieved what he sought to, which was to win, no black student would be at Robert E. Lee. And that is just, it's heartbreaking to me that that name rests upon that school. And every black student that goes into that school sees that name. My ancestors were Confederates. And I wish, if I had been at that time, that I would have made the right call. I probably would have been on the wrong side of history. But I live today, and I'm able to look back at the choices that my grandparents and great-grandparents and great-great-grandparents made and know that they were wrong, and I'm on the right side of history. And I'm asking you guys as board members to be on the right side of history. Do you want to go down as a board that finally made the change that was needed, or be remembered as one of those boards that was always on the wrong side of history? Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Okay, we have Rachel Neal. Come on up to the podium, Rachel.
I'm Rachel Neal, and I'm an REL graduate of 2020. I understand that for many Southern people, Robert E. Lee stands as a pillar of heritage. I don't think it's going to be any use debating over whether or not that heritage is good or bad because historical figures are complex, and trying to decide who gets to be innocent in the eyes of history is exhausting and highly subjective. So, I think that, however, it still does not excuse that Lee's name is an objective statistical error. Robert E. Lee is a majority-minority high school, and the majority of students are black, Latinx, Asian-Americans, mixed-race, or Native American, with only 38% of students as white. As my AP Statistics teacher would tell you, we cannot make accurate assumptions about a population if we choose to select only one portion of that population to represent. So, how could anyone unfamiliar with the school make an accurate guess about who makes up the student body when the heritage is only being represented of white students? I personally don't have any heritage tied to General Lee, and I'll admit, it makes me feel a little bit out of place. So, I think that when our name is being represented as white, it's sending a message about which students we really value.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Crystal Henry.
My apologies.
Hi, Crystal. That's me.
Hi. Many Americans claim the title of the patriot tend to only want to acknowledge the part of history that makes them look good and sweep the parts of the shame under the rug and say, get over it. It's no big deal. Many will say the name of the school is not tied to racism. There again, you have exercised the privilege to ignore the history at the expense of what makes the history look good. At some point, you have to lift up that same rug you keep sweeping stuff under and pull out the facts that the history proves that these schools naming tributes and statues were put up as a power play to intimidate black people and to spit in the face of Jim Crow laws being overruled. We are living in a time where we flip-flop so much to avoid what we don't want to accept. Some want to make use of the inclusive term of "all" as a rebuttal when it is convenient and suits their argument. So, let's make sure we acknowledge that here today. Yes, all history matters, but it can't be the case if my history does not matter. And let me add the word "to" because I know that seems to make a difference to many people. Our pain connected to the pride and the history of this man matters too. I know some of you may have the audacity to continue to say that this man being honored has nothing...
Hey, Crystal. Sorry, you've gone way over, but we're trying to keep everybody at a minute and 20 seconds, so...
That's okay. I'll be back.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, we've got Jessica Adams.
Hello. My name is Jessica Adams. My son was seven years old when we were driving along the loop, and he looked over and saw Robert E. Lee High School. And he, from the backseat, said, Mama, why did they name that school after the wrong side? My son, at seven years old, gets it. Now he's 11, and he goes, Mama, I don't want to go to that school. The thing is, the man Robert E. Lee and the city of Tyler, Texas, have built a reputation for choosing the wrong side. You all have the opportunity right now to change that. You all have the opportunity during this new civil rights movement to be on the right side. And I implore you to consider the feelings of your students that feel marginalized by going to school named after a man that fought to keep them enslaved. You have the opportunity to make this right. Your students want you to make this right. My children want you to make this right before they attend that high school. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jessica. Okay, next we have Larry Wade, Sr. Come on up to the podium, Larry.
Hi. Mr. Dan Star. Oh, yes, sir. Yeah. All right, I want to say good evening to this board, to all administrators. My name is Larry Wade. I am a lifetime member of Tyler, born and raised here. My family goes all the way back to right after the Civil War when two Wade brothers came from Alabama. I'm an educator, retired educator, worked in Tyler throughout East Texas. I'm very proud to be a citizen of this city, and this board is a great board. You've done a lot. I want to congratulate two new members, Artis Newsome and Yvonne Atkins, that I've known for years. We have a great superintendent. But I want to appeal to you again, as I did before. It's time for change. Robert E. Lee is a great school. I have nothing against it. I had children to go there. But it's time to, I think, have a better image for Tyler. I think having the name Robert E. Lee diminishes our image here as a city. I grew up in Tyler as a boy, and I remember the marchings, the protests to change the mascot back during that time. I was a part of the change. I was a part of segregation and integration. So, I want to appeal to this board that it's time to give Tyler a better image. Robert E. Lee was a great general, but unfortunately, him being the head of the Confederate Army. I'm a historian. I taught history. I think it's time to change that name, and so I want you all to consider that at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Wade.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along to Catherine Wright. Hi, Catherine.
My name is Catherine, and I graduated from Robert E. Lee with a class of 2019. And one of the things I noticed in my time at Lee is that students like myself, who were in positions where we were in advanced courses and highly involved, we didn't count the stories of our other students that we didn't come into contact with. Despite the minority-white demographic of Lee, all of my advanced classes had a vast majority of white students. Most of these students, myself included, would discount the struggles of other students because we weren't familiar with them. And in a climate like we have in America, the name of our school is one of the reasons we don't take those stories seriously. And now it's our job to listen to students who are affected by the name of our high school. The name of Robert E. Lee may not seem racist to you or the people in your circle, but there are many students and people who do see it like that. Many students don't feel represented by our name and can't wear it proudly. There is an effect that disenfranchisement has on our students as it comes to motivation and school pride. Imagine what a place it could be if everyone felt unified, like they could proudly carry the name of their high school. I find it hard to...
10 seconds.
I find it hard to say that I'm a proud graduate of Robert E. Lee because of the connotation. If I can't take pride, imagine what other students feel. We aren't asking for everything to change right now. We know it'll be a process. We just want students to be proud of their school and announce it without shame. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Hi, Jacob.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Jacob Lindsay. I'm a proud father of three Tyler ISD students with one more starting next year. I was born at Tyler Community Hospital and have lived in and around Tyler my whole life. I am not part of an outside group. I am not an instigator. This issue truly matters to me, and I'm here to speak as a member of this community. Despite the evidence before you, some on this board and many in our community refuse to accept the fact that Robert E. Lee High School was named so as an affront to the civil rights movement burning through the nation in the 1950s. Lee was opened in 1959 as an all-white high school, complete with a massive Confederate flag, Confederate infantry uniforms, Klan costumes at the pep rallies, and pretend lynchings for fun. Five years after the Supreme Court ruled that segregated schools were unconstitutional, the message sent by the school board and student body of the day is obvious.
15 seconds.
How many more personal accounts of the hurt that this name causes do you need to hear before enough is enough? When does the pain of a black or brown voice take precedence over white preference in Tyler? Thank you.
Mr. Dewberry. Hi, Mr. Dewberry.
Good evening. How are you?
Good evening.
First, I'd like to thank this school board for allowing me the opportunity to speak here tonight. My name is Reverend Lester Dewberry, and I am part of a group called the Tyler Coalition of Pastors, and I speak on behalf of them. And we are coming because we're advocates of you changing the name of Robert E. Lee. We believe with the current events that are happening in our world and country that it's far time that we remove a school that has so much diversity but has a name of division that colors it. I just simply want to say this. Would we think about sending our Jewish children to Hitler High? God bless you, may God keep you.
Thank you, Mr. Dewberry. We've got Charles Parks III. Come on up to the podium. How are you doing, Charles?
I'm doing fantastic. Thank you for the time today. My name's Charles Parks. I was blessed to be able to teach many of students and work with many students as an avid teacher. One of the things that I was blessed to do during this time while they were teaching each other through Socratic method was to hear their hopes and dreams. What hurt my heart was so few of them saw a future or a need to invest in the community here. And many of the reasons I was told is because they don't see the heroes here. One just has to walk along the city square to see the names of the giants that the city is built upon. Those giants deserve to be honored with a school in their name. Sarah McClendon was a journalist of impeccable style and integrity that took to task Republican and Democratic presidents alike. Martin Edwards, this should be a name that more than a few of you are familiar with. He was the first minority who was on a school board. Surely, one of those two would make a worthy name. And besides, Martin Edwards High, MEH, meh, congratulations. Now you've got a social trend that you can go with and do that on social media. Please consider honoring some of the people who have done great things here in Tyler and change Robert E. Lee and John Tyler's name. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Hi, Ms. Lamb.
I am Trudy Lamb, a multi-generational Native African, born and raised in Ghana, Africa, and now a first-generation African-American student at Robert E. Lee. I have stood in the dungeons of the slave castle and seen the three-foot urine and feces stain on the walls where my brothers and sisters were kept. I have seen the tiny hole at the top of the ceiling where they would throw food into the capture cell. I have walked through the gate of no return where over 12 millions of my brother and sisters were kidnapped, never to return back to their home. I have worked the very fields and fetched water for my family from the very place my people were kidnapped. I love and enjoy the sports I play at Robert E. Lee. I cannot bear and will no longer wear Lee's name on my race jersey. I am currently the fastest girl on your varsity cross-country team, and I held that place my ninth grade year, and I plan to do the same my 10th grade year. As one of your students, I am respectfully asking you to take up the Robert E. Lee name change issue. Please vote to change the name, not to Tyler Lee, but after someone who we can all be proud of. This town was built on the backs of my enslaved brothers and sisters. Do it in their memory and honor the future of their ancestors and the ancestors that are at Robert E. Lee. We won't wear the name.
Thank you, Ms. Lamb. Hi, Nate.
Hi. Evening. My name's Nate Singley. I'm here to ask that y'all put the name change up to vote as soon as possible. I'm a second-generation graduate of REL, Robert E. Lee, obviously. I'm the father of future graduates. You know, as a student and then as an adult, I never equated my high school with racism, just like most of us in the room, I hope. But the fact is, the name Robert E. Lee was chosen nearly a century after the Civil War as a loud, direct affront to desegregation. It was selected by people sitting in the very positions you sit tonight. Again, I'm asking, let's get this on the agenda, let's vote it, let's discuss it, and move forward. The change of the name is not erasing or rewriting history. It's accepting the truth of it and choosing to do better. The school board can act now, be on the right side of history, or we can wait and do the next one. That's all I have. Thank you. Appreciate the time.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Singley. We have Nalesia Ross. Nope, Nitesya Ross.
Hello. Can y'all hear me?
We can.
Okay. Hello. Good afternoon, board members. My name is Nitesya Poe-Ross, and today I will be speaking about the name change. So, I wanted to talk about how we should never underestimate the power of a name. When I think of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., I think of the civil rights movement. I think of nonviolence. I think of the character of the man. When I think of Maya Angelou, I think of a prolific speaker, a poet who spoke in the lives of so many people, both men and women. When I think of Hitler, I think of genocide. I think of gas chambers. I think of pain. I think of anguish. And when I think of Robert E. Lee, I think of a man who, by his own statements, felt that black people were inferior. I think of the pain that he caused and the continued fight in his effort to keep black people enslaved and also standing for the continued expansion of slavery. And so, I want us to understand that a name can be paralyzing. I just wonder if you can just engage me for a second and think about...
Yeah, 10 seconds.
And think about how paralyzing Hitler or Robert E. Lee's name was and how it could bring about fear. Understand that you are in the position to be a beacon of hope. Change, and so I hope that you change the name. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ross. Okay, we have Katrina Smith Scoggins.
I'm actually smiling.
Hi, Katrina.
Hi. My name is Katrina Scoggins, and I'm all patched up here because, believe it or not, I had cataract surgery this morning. And I'm 56 years old. I'm back in Tyler. I was born and raised here. I'm the youngest of six kids. I'm 56. I'll be 57 next week, actually. This is something very important to me. That's why I'm out here tonight. It's the first opportunity that I've had to speak out about the fact that I graduated from Robert E. Lee High School here in 1981. I have since loved Tyler, spent most of my time in New York, and built my career there in the music industry, working for Sony Music as their National Director of Sales and Marketing. I'm back here in Tyler, taking care of my 94-year-old mother-in-law to keep her in her home so she can live out her life there. She's in full Alzheimer and dementia. But I didn't prepare words tonight. I stood out and protested against the name Robert E. Lee High School. They integrated schools here in Tyler when I was in the second grade, and I saw all of my sisters, brothers go through when the flags were going up and down Broadway. And my sisters had to endure all of that. So, I just want to impressify you guys to really consider getting on the ballot or in front of your agenda to change the name of Robert E. Lee High School.
Thank you, Katrina. Okay, we have Robbie Wallace coming up next.
Hello.
Hello. Hello, school board. My name's Robbie Wallace. I graduated from Robert E. Lee in 2014. That name...
Hello.
Hello, hello, school board. My name's Robbie Wallace. I graduated from Robert E. Lee in two thousand fourteen. That name is on my diploma, it's on my resume. Um, and it's very unfortunate to me, it's embarrassing because that name is rooted in hatred and slavery and just blood and just, it makes me really sad. Um, so, I want you to change the name, brothers and sisters, we are those little brothers that dry what big brother soaked. We are those little brothers that fix what big brother broke. Those brothers that give love when big brother won't. Little brother is he who learns from the elders' mistakes. She who plants a rose where there once was a stake. Those who fill the void of pain and ache with barrels of love for love's sake. Brothers and sisters, we wish to water our community tree. We wish to paint the world bright, to overwhelm sight so we may move past black and white. This name needs to be changed. It takes a lot of courage and self-knowledge to admit that you have hurt someone, and there are so many people out there that are hurt by this name.
Ten seconds.
You've compromised their self-work, worth and their dignity, and there's no timeline for resolution when human dignity is at stake. Thank you. Open your ears to the people speaking.
Thank you, Robbie. Okay, we have Brandon Collins. Hi, Brandon.
Um, hi, my name is Brandon Collins. Um, I'm back to, I'll give you guys a quick history lesson, but to urge you guys to put this topic back on the board and act on it. Um, I assume we all know the history of Lee. I assume we have all set up our opinions based on facts and compassion and thorough research, and not just minuscule tidbits of what we have been taught in the schooling system. Though Lee has nothing to do with it, he has become a beaming symbol for white supremacy and hatred, just as a Confederate flag. If it is heritage, this heritage is hate. It saddens me to know that a city that claims to be rooted in God and love will fight to uphold the name of a man who not only owned my ancestors, but was known to be a notoriously aggressive slave owner who was known to be ruthless with his beatings and punishments. Historian is note Lee as a great tactician, and that's it. He is responsible for the deaths of thousands of Southern lives who fought against the Northern Union only to uphold the ideal of slavery. When Tyler was forced to integrate over ten years ago, after Brown, over, when Tyler was forced to integrate over ten years after Board versus the Brown Education, Tyler screamed they didn't want us here. When Tyler Lee was forced to eradicate all their Confederate memorabilia, they screamed history and heritage. The tactics have not changed, only time. This is not a new topic, and with the social change that our country is going under, it will never stop. Change is inevitable, so the question is, do you want to be on the right side of history or the wrong side? And if Robert Lee was in this room today, who would he want dead and who would he want alive?
Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Cornelius Shackelford Senior next. Hi, Mr. Shackelford.
How you doing, Mr. President?
Doing all right.
Well, my name is Cornelius Shackelford, and, um, most of you guys do know me, I do a lot of athletic training around East Texas, and I try to get in, into the community and, and serve as best as I can. Uh, the reason why I'm here today is because of the, the name Robert E. Lee. It's been plaguing our community for quite some time. Uh, our community, uh, take extreme offense to the name. Uh, I myself, my great-great-grandmother was born into slavery. And, you know, my, my grandfather couldn't get the right education because Robert E. Lee was put here. Yeah, and we, and we just couldn't get the right education, and then my mother and my uncles and aunts, their experiences was, was, was just not a great experience. With the rubber flags being, you know, flown in the school, the, the kids jumping on back of pickup trucks, you know, waving their rubber flags, screaming, you know, offensive things to them. So, I was the first one to go across town in my family. My whole family went to Robert E. Lee. But my sons, my daughters, would go to Robert E. Lee. I live two blocks from the school. I do not want my sons and my daughters to go glorify a name that wished their great-great-grandmother was born a slave to. So, that's my question. I would like for you guys to vote. I would, I'd like you guys to make the change. The time is now.
Thank you, Mr. Shackelford. Okay, we have Clayton Riggs.
Hi Clay.
Hey, how's it going?
All right. Take this down, you can hear it a little better. Keep it brief. We all know why we're here. We all know why the school was named that. We're ready for a change. It's up to you guys. If you don't do it tonight, we'll be back. And we'll be back again and again. We're ready for the change. I think Tyler's ready for the change. I think you're ready for the change. Thank you.
Thanks, Clay. Okay, we have Jonathan Hawk up next. Hi Jonathan.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Hawk, and I am a twenty-nineteen graduate from REEL. Seventeen thousand years ago, some of the first humans created some of the first art when they placed their hands against the side of a cave and spewed pigment across. If you look at what's there, then you'll see a splattering of colors. But it's not until you look at what isn't there, do you understand the bigger picture. And as a white person, we must look at what isn't there to understand the bigger picture. And what isn't there, for me, is having to go to a school every day for four years that is named after a traitor to the United States and fought and killed to make sure that I was deprived of my own personal liberty. That wasn't there for me. That wasn't there for many of you, and that wasn't there for many of the people in this room. But if TISD has taught me one thing, it's that sometimes we need to shut up and listen to those who know more than us. To listen to those who have been through it and have gone through it, rather than those who have listened to it. And when given the choice between actively helping and actively hurting the beautiful people of color that have always lived in Tyler, Texas, I am baffled to find that anyone might stutter. It's time to change the name. Thank you.
All right, thank you Jonathan. Okay, we have Honor Neal next. Hi, Honor.
Hello. I'm Honor Neal, class of two thousand twenty-one. I believe that the name of our school is unrepresentative of our community. It is time for a change. Along with the name, Tyler ISD must commit to long-term change. TISD is a majority-minority school district. Only twenty-one point one percent of its students are white. Yet, six, over sixty percent of its teachers are white. The difference is even more stark in the administrative population. Our achievement gap is also no secret to the community. Jason Grissom from Vanderbilt University studies race equity in schools and found that merely having Hispanic and black teachers will increase the chances of minorities to get into gifted and talented programs. I am not asking for you to fire all of the white teachers, that would be ridiculous. I am asking that you implement race-related bias training at your schools to help close the gap. Finally, I ask that you listen and take your students seriously. We know these issues are complex, change does not happen over time. We are not idealists, we are the students you have educated. Thank you.
Thank you, Honor. Kasari Yassin? Ye- yes, Yassin, sorry. Hi, Ms. Yassin.
Hi. Hi, my name is Yasmeen Khalifa, and I'm a two thousand seventeen Robert E. Lee High School graduate. Though I'm not black, I'd like to share some experiences that offer a glimpse of what people of color experience in East Texas, and specifically what they experience at Lee. Robert E. Lee High School is the same high school where I got stopped by a large group of boys and asked, if you could bomb any building in the United States, which would it be? Robert E. Lee High School is the same high school where a US government teacher asked students to pull out a pencil. But when I, a Muslim Arab woman, went to pull out a pencil, he said, "Hey, hey, hey! Oh, I thought you were pulling out a weapon." Robert E. Lee High School is the same high school that showed me racism and hate instead of teaching me love. When you have the name of a man who owned slaves and led the Confederacy plastered on your walls, you not only dismiss racism and hate, but you invite it in to live, grow and thrive. You say, "It's okay to harass people of color." Robert E. Lee did it, and we commemorate and celebrate his name every day. Again, I'm not black, and I can't speak for black people, but I know that I've, I, but I know what I've experienced at Lee as a person of color, and it's only the tip of the iceberg.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we might have skipped one, and I don't know, because that was Yasmeen, right, Khalifa? Right, yeah, so there was a Kasari Yassin before that, but anyway. Next up is Joshua Coleman. Okay, okay, good deal. Hi, how are you?
I'm good, how are you? Hi, my name is Kesar Yassin, and I am a part of the class of two thousand twenty-two at Robert E. Lee High School or the school that shall not be named. If you can't tell, I like Harry Potter, and I support the movement to rename my high school. As the daughter of two immigrants, I've heard stories of my parents' struggles to get here. Being an OiGor minority in the eastern, uh, Western Autonomous Region in China has been a struggle on its own. Incidents like how when my mother made a higher grade than her Chinese friend, her mother would say, "How'd you let her beat you?" Or how my cousin who goes to an all-OiGor high school gets less opportunities than the Han Chinese kids in the other schools. Or finally, how my dad learned English on his own because the government saved English resources to the Chinese high schools are proof that systemic discrimination exists to this day in China and are alive and well in other parts of the world, including our own community. When I have to put Robert E. Lee High School on a summer program, I am ashamed. When I have to put Robert E. Lee High School on my resume, I am embarrassed. When I see the result of that half-hearted compromise known as Ty Lee High School on a rankings list, I am disappointed. I stand alongside students and members of our community in the step towards acknowledging the dehumanization the institution of segregation has brought upon our city and the implicit bias found in our education as a result of it. With this name change, our community can begin to heal after decades spent in the wrong side of history. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Joshua Coleman. How you doing, Mr. Coleman?
I'm doing pretty good, how are you doing?
Good, thank you.
So, when our school system dismantles school names, social structures, mental conditionings that perpetuate low self-worth, and we start to embrace a school system of inclusivity for all members of the community, regardless of race, uh, gender, sexual affiliation, religious affiliation, sexual orientation, we can start to bring up self-worth and value, and maybe we can use this as a tool to raise state testing scores, scores, not only for high school, but elementary students, and help bring up and bridge the gap between our school district and the community and lower economic areas. I myself am a product of a lower-income family, parents who never had a home, who did not go to school, but thankfully, I had the foundation to go to TJC and get my licensed vocational nursing degree, and then eventually my registered nursing degree. And it took a lot of work, a lot of dedication, not just for myself, but for my teachers to bring me up and give me my self-worth. And a name like Robert E. Lee or John Tyler can bring down self-worth. And I hope that we can start to change that today. Thank you.
Thank you, Joshua. Okay, we have Cory Howard. Hi Cory.
All right, well, I'll keep it brief, I know this is gonna be the longest meeting that y'all have probably ever had. Um, I want to start with an ancient proverb that says, "The best time to plant a tree was twenty years ago, and the next best time is today." Um, the best time to change Lee's name would have been in nineteen seventy-one when Emmett Scott closed, but we didn't do that as a city. Um, the next best time is now. There really truly is no better time than now with a new school opening. This is it, so. I hope you listened to all the voices today, and I'm sorry you have to sit through it all, but there's a lot of very passionate people out there, so, thank you for everything.
Thanks Cory, comes with the job. Okay, we have Danielle Hubbard.
Hi Danielle.
Hello. Are you ready for me?
We are ready.
Um, I'm, you already know what kind of a man, gener- Robert E. Lee was, and I'm sure many other people have filled you in on that. So I'm not gonna speak on that today, I'm gonna talk on childhood trauma, which I happen to know about. Although I do look white, I am a quarter-black, and I grew up, as a child, not even dreaming to be a princess, because I thought if I lived back in the monarchy days, I'd be a slave. And that's what you're instilling in these children with these messages. You're glorifying their oppressors along with the whitewashed history books. And it's not okay. The time for change is now. And there's just nothing more to it.
Thank you Danielle. Okay, we have Julie Gobble. Hi Julie.
Hi. Thank you for being here tonight. I know most of you personally, and I'm here not to attack, not to say words of anger, but to say that I have been tasked for the last year of getting to know the people of Tyler as, as a candidate for Texas House. Something that I hold very as the biggest responsibility I've ever been given in my life. That responsibility means that I listen. I listen to people all day, every day. I ask them questions about their lives, their experiences, their hearts, their feelings, and how that relates to the government that mandates those lives. And what I have heard over the last three weeks of protesting with thousands of individuals is that they are hurting. It has amassed over hundreds of years of oppression, and there is nothing more important than a name. The name of Robert E. Lee stands for that oppression. It stands for the pain inflicted upon their ancestors and the ancestor before them. And they have asked me to ask you to please change the name respectfully. Julie.
Thank you Julie. Okay, we have Shanice Kendrick. Hi, Ms. Kendrick.
Hello, I'm Shanice Kendrick, um, representing for the class of two thousand and ten. Um, I would like to start off by saying this. Robert E. Lee, we raise our voices in praise of your name. May honor and glory arise you to fame. That is our school song. Being a black female, I had to sing that every Friday at pep rallies. Um, being a part of dance, Palm Squad, had to sing that every game. Had to learn it. I've never had to actually sit and learn a song to be a part of an activity in order to sing it during sporting events. Think about how that makes my people feel to sing praises to a man's name who did not want us to even go to his so precious school. The school wasn't meant for us, but it now is for everybody. So the school name should represent that. Thank you.
Thank you Shanice. Okay. Um, Eliah Jansen? I totally messed that up, so. Is it Eliah? I'm, I'm here.
I'm sorry, Aleah.
Aleah, okay, thank you.
As a two-year, as a current two-year student of Robert E. Lee High School, I feel that if Robert E. Lee changes their name, eighth-grade, uh, African-American parents will feel safe for their child to walk the halls of- eighth-grade African-American parents will feel safe for their child to walk the halls of Robert E. Lee and not knowing that their child would have to deal with racial slurs, and their child would be safe walking the halls by themselves, and... Yeah, sorry, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Aleah. Sarai Sinvil, or Sarah? Hi, I think I got your name wrong, but I apologize.
Yeah, you did.
What is it?
It's Saray.
Saray?
Yes.
Hi, Saray.
Okay. Hello, everyone, my name is Sarai Sinvil, and I am a current student at Robert E. Lee High School. The inspiration for my speech came from a documentary that I watched about Tyler a couple of weeks ago. And in the document, the documentary was made in the 50s, and throughout the several clips that they showed of the public facilities, the schools, and the residential neighborhoods, they did not want to show a black man, woman, or child along with a Latino man, woman, or child when our communities made up a notable size of Tyler. And while watching that documentary, of course, I wasn't confused by what they were showing because I realized that they were trying to appeal to a certain brand. And the creators of this documentary didn't see anything wrong with representing what was a majority instead of all the citizens in Tyler. And something that scares me about that documentary is that today, with the name of Robert E. Lee, we still do not see anything wrong with representing only a minority, and we don't see anything wrong with having a brand. And the brand in the 50s and the brand today is the continuance of blame racism, and that needs to change because the brand is no longer selling. At Lee, the symbol, sorry, okay.
That's okay.
Well, that's it. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. Kendra McAlexander. Hi, Kendra.
Hello. My name is Kendra McAlexander, and I started the Fight for Justice ETX Facebook page and movement, well, kinda, anyways. I wanted to speak about the, the name change and why I feel like it should be changed. First of all, through Robert E. Lee's background as a general, and what he said, what I've read in this passage, it says, "The real Robert E. Lee." And there's a quote that he says. And he says, "Slavery as an institution is a moral and political evil. I think it, however, a greater evil to the white man than to the black race. The blacks are immeasurably better off here than in Africa morally, socially, and physically. The painful discipline they are undergoing is necessary for their instruction as a race, and I hope will prepare and lead them to better things." The only thing I have to say is, a man, they can say that and live by that and follow that as... His morals should not be the name of a school in 2020 or at any time. Thank you.
Thank you, Kendra. Okay, we have Sky Williams. Hi, Sky.
Hello. Anyways, my name is Sky Williams. I'm a proud graduate of John Tyler High School, class of 2019. And I'm here because I'm coming to you as a future high school administrator, a future high school teacher, let me take this off. And I simply do not want my future students, my future kids, to go to a school that's built on hate. I just, it's not cool, I don't like it, we don't like it. And I just ask for the board to motion to vote so that we can get the name changed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sky. Tim Goters, or Gators?
Hi, Tim, I'm sure I messed up your last name.
It's all right. I'm Tim Gators, Tyler, Texas. The last time this issue came up, I spoke against it. I thought it would be a teachable moment if we do something along the lines of keeping the name and actually explain the history. Because the international and national groups that are wanting these name changes aren't gonna be satisfied with just statues and some name changes. It's gonna be, the city of Tyler's gonna change its name, the state of Texas. There's even talk about removing the Washington Monument, remove, changing the name of Washington itself. People don't know what it is that they don't know, but you could be putting a plaque in front of both Robert E. Lee High School and John Tyler and explain the history of the Democrat Party's control and ownership of slavery. Jim Crow, founding of the KKK, the Separate But Equal Educational System, blocking the Civil Rights Act that President Eisenhower tried to put in. This is a chance for you to do something about that and maintain the name, or since President Trump is the only president alive that actually defeated slavery by defeating ISIS, name it Donald J. Trump High School. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Next, we have Ronald Purdue. Hi, Mr. Purdue.
Good morning, or afternoon, appreciate you letting us speak. My name is Ronald Purdue, and I'm a retired purchasing, purchasing agent for the state of Texas. I sent out 7,500 emails to South Tyler here yesterday or last night, and I'm hoping that most of them are in favor of not changing the name because my family does not want to do that. I had three kids graduate from Lee. Now they have diplomas from Robert E. Lee, A&amp;M, and UT, Texas. But their Robert E. Lee diplomas will not be very good if you change the name. A few years ago, y'all took our flag away at Lee, then you took our mascot away, and now you want to remove our history of Robert E. Lee. We voted for the bond, bond a few years ago to build Robert E. Lee along with John Tyler. And if you pursue changing the name, we should never approve another TISD bond issue. I have about a million dollars in real estate, I pay a lot of taxes, but we should not support y'all anymore because you lied to us by stating you were gonna build Robert E. Lee. Now you're saying you're not. Let's see.
Your, your time's up, Mr. Purdue. We appreciate you coming to speak.
Okay, appreciate it, and I'm adamantly against it, just like a lot of people are. I thought this was settled last year, but apparently it's not, it's gonna be an ongoing thing. Don't listen to these radical groups from out of town. They don't represent Tyler, Texas.
Appreciate you. Okay, we have Amy Ames up next. Hi, Amy. Go on up to the podium, you can leave it there.
No, Amy, in the green bucket.
Bucket, copies for the, in the bucket?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll give it to them, we just need to give it a little time to, not you, but...
Thank you.
Hi.
Thank you to the board and the trustees and, and the superintendent and the faculty here today. My name is Amy Ames, and I'm a parent of two Tyler ISD students, one who's a sixth grader going to Moore Middle School and one who is a ninth grader who'll be entering Robert E. Lee High School. I'm here today to urge you to change the name of Robert E. Lee. I think this can be done in a phased-in approach to minimize costs, and I think it can be done in a way to honor the current students who are attending Lee High School. On Friday night, I had the opportunity to attend with my son a meeting with the students. And the students are the ones that you really need to listen to. They're the ones who are representing the school. They're the ones who are, have a voice, and they're the ones who are exhibiting the successful student outcomes for Tyler ISD. This is your vision, let them be partner with you to show them that you respect their point of view and you're willing to listen to them to change the name. I think it makes a lot of sense for us to respect them as I hope that today that they're respecting you. Thank you, and you have a great day.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have Cedric Granberry, senior. Hi, Mr. Granberry.
Hey, how you doing?
All right.
President. When is, time's already started?
It is.
All right, so, um, let me start off by saying there's not a better time than now to do what's right. In the 1950s, we saw landmark cases such as Brown versus the Board of Education in 1954. Also, the NAACP and future Supreme Court Justice Thurgood Marshall came to Tyler to argue in the case of Tyler State Park in which he deemed that you are violating your own law by not allowing blacks at the Tyler State Park. The same defiance was, was condoned and perpetuated by Tyler ISD, ultimately requiring the Consent Decree in 1970 in which the court order required immediate integration, which was truly never achieved. Subsequently, all black schools were closed, and as an answer to this, there were names like Robert E. Lee. Why did they choose names like Robert E. Lee? I'll tell you why. Because it means, "Don't forget, boy, stay in your place, [bleep]. We want you to remember, we may have lost, but you will never win." The time is now for us to change this. We have a resolution from the Texas NAACP which calls for the removal of all symbols of the Confederacy from our publicly funded and maintained places and spaces. Be it also resolved that the Texas NAACP calls for the removal and change of names of all buildings, schools, streets, mascots, parks, and any other publicly funded and maintained resources or assets. I have a copy for each board member.
Time's up, man. Thank you, Mr. Granberry. There's a green bucket right in front of the podium.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Rick Rogers. It looks like Dr. Rogers, it sure is.
Hello.
Hi.
Thanks, you guys, for being here. Never aspire to your job, and I'm grateful that you do it. And I never want this job, so thanks for being here so late. I can't tell you any facts you haven't already heard. I can't present any history you haven't already heard. It's been so well presented that I think the speech delivered before the last meeting, when the vote didn't happen, should be required viewing for every student in TISD. But I will appeal on an emotional basis. Fifteen years ago at my lake house, we had a group of students there from different parts of the country, and a Confederate flag flew in the yard next to mine. The leader of that group asked if it was safe to stay there, and three of the kids were African-American, and I never saw the flag like that. I grew up in Dallas, I've been here 35 years, I'm not old Tyler, and that's not old Tyler out there if you haven't noticed. But, but it shocked me that he would say that, is it safe? And I don't think the people who live here, including some of my best friends, can see Robert E. Lee, the symbol. All they see is a great man that they came to love and a school they came to love. But I don't think they see the symbol of white supremacy that he's become. He's a leader of the Confederate Army, and he's a leader of the group that fought to preserve slavery, and I don't think you can keep the name. I sent all y'all an email before the last vote and said, "It's gonna change." And I didn't know that would come up this soon, but it's going to change, and I would like for you guys to consider to be that group.
Thank you, Dr. Rogers. And thank you for your service to the community and the medical field as well. Okay, Will Rogers. Hi, Will.
Good evening. I was a student at Robert E. Lee, captain of the drum line, was on the football field every Friday night, and was asked to speak at the graduation where basically I just tried to ask people, as you go forward into the future, ask yourself, "What decision could I make now that I'm gonna regret the least? You've got this opportunity to do something, and I just hope you don't regret it, y'all. This is really, it's an obvious choice. Like, if your heart is hard, please find a way to make it a little more tender so you can listen. I'm praying for you, I'm praying for the other folks who are trying to hold on to something that's gone. The war is over, the war is over, the war is over. We can let it go. Thanks, y'all."
Thanks, Will. Okay, next up, we have Michael Austin, M.D. Hi, Michael.
Hi, my name's Dr. Michael Austin, and I, along with, I guess, Rick Rogers, represent the old white guy contingent here tonight. But I've lived in Tyler for 22 years, and I've been a pediatrician in Tyler for 22 years. And I really have just three really quick points to make. One is that in 22 years, I've, I couldn't fathom sending my kid to a school where they walk the halls every day, and the very name of their school represents oppression and slavery. And it's humiliating to them. And I think psychological damage is done to our children in this community because they attend Robert E. Lee High School. So I stand in, in unison with my black brothers and sisters in this community to, to want to change the name. Two, personally, I've realized I'm complicit. Silence is complicity, and I've been complicit for 22 years, and I'm here to change that. Thirdly, I'm just embarrassed. I'm embarrassed to be a member of this community. I'm embarrassed now to live in Tyler, Texas because we have a remnant of slavery and racism represented in this community. And as new, as I welcome new people into my, our community and into my practice, I, I'm surprised how many mention that they're embarrassed to. And so I just recommend that you make the change. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate your time.
Okay, we have Robert Davis Jones. Hi, Mr. Jones.
Hello. These are the words of a close mentor of mine who couldn't make it here today, and I believe in them fully. People change their names all the time to drive a stake in the ground, to erect a monument, to serve as a permanent reminder that they have grown, changed, and advanced. It's common for a woman to change her last name when she marries a man going from single to being married. It's common for a Bobby to change his called name to Bob or Robert when he graduates and gets his first business cards printed. The Bible records numerous instances when God himself gave someone a new name because of a significant change he had done inside of them. He changed one letter in a man's name, as the bad actor did at 180, from being the greatest persecutor to the greatest promoter the church ever saw. Saul the persecutor became Paul the promoter. Jacob started out as a whiny, sniveling little brother and was transformed into the father of a nation. So it just seemed natural and right to change his name to Israel. Name changes are almost universally a good thing. A formal name change recognizes and formalizes growth and maturity earned over time through hard work, successes, failures, second chances, and a lot of help from other people. Our child born here in Tyler was Kristen Robert about 55 years ago. Maybe Robert's parents chose his name to honor someone they admired at the time, or maybe to reflect their dreams of who he would grow up to be. But when Robert was a baby here in Tyler, the mention of his name probably just struck fear in the hearts of many students, parents, and families. Name changes are natural, normal, and clarions of growth and maturity.
Appreciate you, Mr. Jones. Okay, and last but certainly not least is Bob Brewer. Hi, Mr. Brewer.
Hello. Thank you, board. I hope we already, how much time do we have?
A minute and 20, 15, 14.
Oh, wait, somebody told me two minutes.
Well...
Can we start over?
Minute and 10. We've only been here an hour and 10 minutes, Bob. Go ahead, man, you got it.
So, how much time do I get?
You got a minute now.
Yeah.
You got a minute and 20.
When you're ready to start, so, I'll get back to this, here we go.
The fact that we went through this in August of 2018 is just positive for why we shouldn't be doing this again or putting up with any of this stuff outside. Even though I agree with most of those folks out there, especially the black ones. with most of those folks out there, especially the black ones, on the racism that exists in Tyler and in Tyler schools, and I hate to keep going through it. It's supported by, uh, coding agencies on the two black Christian schools that I supported in Tyler. Every time they try to start up, fire department comes in, hits them with, with code violations that were perfectly okay when it was UT Tyler, Texas State, the county, and Robert's Elementary School. Same thing with the, uh, church. So, I think that is totally racist against students that want to study the Bible, and the fact that that has been pulled out of schools is utterly unconscionable, and we gotta get it back. So, anyway, uh, also, this bilingual thing is utterly racist. When we expect that Spanish-speaking people can't learn English, that is totally wrong, it's divisive, and I think it's another unconscionable thing. So, anyway, uh, the funding that we're getting is totally unconstitutional, as are the standards that are being mandated by the federal government, and I won't even get started on the swimming pool situation that was a world-class Olympic standard pool that we had at Fun Forest.
Thank you, Mr. Brewer. And, uh, that is it for public comment. So, we appreciate everybody who came out to express their opinions, and, uh, we are moving on with this meeting and the business of Tyler ISD. Um, okay, so we have the approval of minutes, uh, items A, B, and C here. May I have a motion to approve the minutes that are on the agenda?
I move we approve the minutes, uh, items A, B, and C.
Thank you, Mr. Burkfield. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All right, thank you, Dr. Nation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, ayes have it, motion carries. Uh, we are going on to the continuous improvement portion of our meeting. Uh, A is the goals for successful student outcomes, local board policy, A, exhibit first reading. Dr. Crawford?
Yes, sir. On page 21 of your agenda, you have a, uh, the background in regard to, excuse me. Um, what we need to do to meet statute, um, as what we started back in 2016 in aligning our goals, um, for, for what we needed to have, um, we now actually have legislation from House, um, House Bill 3, that, uh, that came out, that's down in the Texas Education Code, that came out of the 86th Legislative Session, that, um, actually codifies this as well. So, it's a statewide initiative, every school system in the state has to have an early literacy goal, um, they also have to have early mathma, or, excuse me, a mathematics goal, they also need to have career technology education goal. Before y'all, in your packet is a first reading of the goals that we do have set before y'all. We do think that they are SMART goals, um, very strategic in where we were going with that as well. Uh, if you look at progress measure, my glasses on me, progress measure four, that would be the actual goal that we used to have, uh, or, excuse me, it's the progress measure that, that's attached to our MAP scores. Remember, we tried to recalibrate MAP into STAR vocabulary, into STAR language, because the MAP and the STAR was not meeting up as far as being able to convey that to the public, convey that to the boards as well. The educators knew we relied with MAP, we didn't really have a good understanding of it, we don't think, as far as being able to present that. So, that's at progress measure four now. We, uh, certainly have other, um, goals in here as well, as far as career technology as they go through the packet. Um, we actually have SIOs here tonight, we have to ask Dr. James Kurton, who could also, uh, answer any questions for y'all as we go forward. Again, this is a first reading, the time between our, uh, this first, uh, uh, this first reading and our second reading to where the actual adoption would occur. So, typical, uh, um, logistics and mechanics as far as us trying to get this in front of y'all for policy. This does have to be approved by the first of the school year.
Okay, well, we will make sure we look over that. Does anybody have any questions, uh, or anything initially?
I have a question, uh, comment or something. I, I was looking at the, these projections, and not being an educator, I, I was kind of appalled at the, the goals that were established, uh, in regards to, uh, the, the African-American and Hispanics in particular, you know, I guess my standards are a little bit higher, but I'm sure there's a formula or something that you use to come up with these projections, but I would like to see us exceed those projections that's actually listed here, if it's any way possible, and that should be our goal, because that is not, from my perspective, it's not acceptable. Uh, you know, I have high standards, though.
Yeah, I think in education, we've learned a lot. You know, starting, starting in the year 2000, when No Child Left Behind was first presented to the public, that 100% of students would pass X, Y, and Z. I think we've gone 20 years in figuring out that we've got a lot of work to do.
Yeah.
And we've made a lot of, uh, first downs here in Tyler ISD. Certainly, we'd love to carry the ball across the goal line, but as we calibrated these goals, we gave us what, what we thought was a realistic opportunity for 18,000 students, uh, along with the subgroups that you just mentioned, to be able to attain more first downs. Um, the, you know, we would love for, for these things to happen, to where we score a big 75-yard touchdown pass, but we have to be realistic. That's what the R in SMART, um, stands for. Absolutely, absolutely, we want to attain, which is what the A stands for in the SMART goals, measurable is M, S is what?
Simple?
Simple?
Specific.
Specific, excuse me, simple.
Sorry.
And T is?
Timely.
Timely, yeah, time-based. So, I think that as we go forward, absolutely, we can do that. We do know we were making progress and going in the right direction, we'd like for, to, to make that happen quicker, and we think we've got some things in place that can't happen, but this is our recommendation to y'all to be able to attain that.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Crawford.
We'd be happy to hear from you between now and the next time to be able to, to, to do this, uh, if, if there's some other numbers that y'all want to put out there.
Okay.
I share the same concern Mr. Newsom has, just in terms of, of us looking down the road several years from now and still having a quarter of our kids not passing STAR reading. Uh, I recognize that this is a significant improvement from where we have been, um, and my, um, my concern would be, to use the sports analogy you began, that if there was the opportunity to throw a ball way down the field, um, our goals would have been one of the, one of the motivations behind that, and so by lowering, um, lowering the expectation, I would hope that that wouldn't cause us to be less aggressive in attaining these goals. I can look back over the last few years and see how aggressively the whole reading program has been revamped, the aggressiveness of professional development, and I think that was in part because the goals that were set were very high. And so, um, I share the concern Mr. Newsom has, which is, um, I wouldn't want to send a message that we shouldn't, um, be aggressive and, um, and be complacent if we woke up three, four years from now and one in four of our students still couldn't pass the reading STAR.
That's fair. Um, certainly understand, and we hear you, and certainly want the, um, opportunity to continue to work, uh, towards improvement like we have been. Uh, certainly not going backwards, that would certainly, I wouldn't be sitting here in front of you talking to you today, uh, with you today about this. So, I think we have the ability to do it, uh, but it does go back to tier-one instruction. Uh, certainly, the qualified, outstanding teacher in every classroom is what we strive to hire, and we'll continue to do that, and we'll continue to support them and train them as led by quality principals.
Okay, any other questions or comments for Dr. Crawford about our goals? Um, next, we have board operating procedures, first reading as well.
Um, this also is in your, uh, in your, your packet, this was actually started to be, uh, as were the goals, worked on last November. As we went through our team-of-eight building last November, started creating these goals, we got into the new semester, and then obviously had a tragedy happen, uh, in February, where Mr. Sterling, uh, passed, uh, away from us, and then we had COVID. So, we're now bringing these board operating procedures back to y'all for review. There's nothing different in there than what they were in November, we just kind of got off schedule a little bit in regard to the goals and the board operating procedures. Uh, this is a first reading also. If you have any questions about the board operating procedures, you're more than welcome to, to call me or one of the assistant superintendents, or, excuse me, on this one, Gina Orr, the board secretary, in regard to that.
Okay. Um, any comments, questions there? All righty. Uh, okay, we're going down to our business, legal, finance consent agenda. Um, did we want to pull any items?
D. We're pulling D.
We're pulling D, yes, the delegate alternate for TASCASB. Um, any other ones before I entertain a recommendation for A through I, with the exception of D?
So, moved?
Second.
Second, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Now, D is, every year, we have to approve a delegate and alternate for the TASCASB convention. It is in early October this year, and I think I might have read the tea leaves and heard that Aaron Martinez wants to be our delegate. Is that correct?
Sign me up.
And I will be an alternate, because, you know, you just can't say no. Um, okay, so, all in favor of Aaron being our delegate and me being the alternate, uh, do I have a motion for that?
I so moved.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Nation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Newsom, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. We're going on to our curriculum and instruction consent agenda. Um, did we have any ones that we wanted to pull from this bunch? Nope? Okay, do I have a motion to approve items A through D on this curriculum instruction consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, motion carries. Uh, okay, now, we have on to discussion items, we got local policy, policy CFC, and we also have the Student Code of Conduct after that.
Discussion item 12, on letter A, local policy CFC, first reading, that is actually the internal audit, uh, charter, getting codified into, uh, into policy. Any questions that you may have in regard to that? Jan Coker, Director of Internal Audit and Consulting Services, you more than welcome to call her.
Okay.
First reading.
Sounds good to me, we'll review it, and, uh, and then the Student Code of Conduct.
Student Code of Conduct, first reading. We do know that there will be some changes between now and whenever you do your, um, your first reading, there's been some adjustments to Title IX that have come in once the agenda has been posted, and so we'll make sure that, uh, outline those once we get to our second reading so that you have access to. Is that correct, Mr. Jones, Title IX?
Yes.
He's already compensated for that? Is it in the, the current Student Code of Conduct that's in their packet, or no?
No, sir, because they have, they have not released those updates.
Right.
They released later, but we have updated the current student handle.
Okay.
But we're waiting to hand that to the university.
Okay, very good. Well, we need to go ahead and get these things done so that we have something for the first of school, as always. Y'all know me, I hate adopting the Student Code of Conduct after school has started. It doesn't ever make sense that way. So, once again, we're gonna adopt this and wait for changes to come in from the state once they get here. Is that correct?
It's only Title IX.
It's only Title IX, so that's actually a flow-through from the feds to the state, and we're waiting on that. All right?
Sounds good.
First reading, if you have any questions about that, holler at me or Mr. Jones, um, and then we'll either get you in touch with Mr. Johnson, or we can answer that question ourselves.
Okay, uh, moving on to the superintendent's staff report, uh, quarterly investment report.
It's that time again, um, for your quarterly investment report and your quarterly financial executive summary. We have Tasha Bjork here tonight to, uh, maybe explain a few of those items. Tasha? Tasha, don't go up there, come over here and use my microphone.
Okay, on the investment report, if you'll look on page 72 of the agenda, you can tell the effects of the economy. We are currently at 1.22% rate of return on our investments. It's still higher than what the interest rate is everywhere else, but you can tell the effects, it's starting to drop down. And the, as far as the financial statements, on page 96 is a summary, and if you look down, the general fund looks to be pretty much in line, because we've received all our revenue, we are still paying everyone salaries, so we're pretty much in line, but when you get like to food service, you see the revenues have declined because of the fact that we weren't bringing in as much revenue on school lunches, but yet the expenditures are still steady, the same amount. So, that's the only thing that really stands out on the financials. Do y'all have any other questions?
Does anybody have any other questions for Tasha on this? I think I'm good with it. Okay, thank you, we appreciate it. Okay, and, Dr. Crawford, did that also cover the item B right there?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, and so we're moving on to our COVID update.
Can you hand these out to them, please? Thank you. So, you've got two things coming your way, is gonna be the actual COVID update, and then a calendar for your viewing. We'll talk about that on the first item of the, of the, uh, COVID update. Mr. Jones is gonna hand those items out to y'all as we go about this. We don't need to stand TV, guys. Here? Is this good right here? Okay, is that cam, that camera gets me that? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So, I wanted to go ahead and mention that the, uh, there is no change to the, to the start date of school. I know we've been kind of waiting for that to happen, uh, waiting to make an announcement. Um, there's been some tinkering going on across the state, maybe considering intercessional calendars, maybe an earlier start date, because we've had some of the issues that we've had towards wrapping up the final three months of the 2019, 2020 school year, but I am here to announce, to announce tonight publicly, we are rolling with the actual calendar that y'all adopted, I don't know, back in January, earlier this year, sometimes earlier this year. Um, very appreciative of the calendar committee and our faculty and staff, who did look at some alternative calendars and considered it, and actually got excited about some things, but with some of the uncertainty that's happening, uh, in our future in regard to our legisla, 87th Legislative Session, I think, uh, the time to maybe consider some other, uh, innovative calendaring could potentially happen whenever things kind of normalize a little bit. So, we'll go ahead and, and start, start, uh, with, uh, the, uh, with the calendar that you adopted, consistency wins out. We will, however, add emergency closure dates to the back end of the calendar. If you'll notice, the entire month of June is actually circled during that time. If we wind up having to go through something like we had this year, uh, we could potentially go through the entire month of June as far as instruction goes. You know, what, what is different about this coming year as opposed to the year that we just closed up? Well, one is accountability and revenue. Um, probably not gonna get the same type of leniency from the Texas Education Agency, um, as, as we got this last year. Um, I think everyone's figured out where this virus is heading, the, the way the data's coming in, and, and the, the populations that it is affecting, and we do think, uh, there will be an announcement, there's already been an announcement, that we will have in-school instruction as well. Certainly, we will have some, um, family... Certainly, we will have some families that choose a little different direction. We still want them to stick with us. We're going to provide something for them as well. We'll get to that here in a minute. But those emergency closure dates, just want you to make sure that you're aware of those. That's our way to go ahead and plan for any type of closures we may have that might be some of these bigger breaks as opposed to intercessional calendars. Do expect further guidance from TEA later this week, with topics including the opening of school, the funding of school systems for next year, and accountability among other areas of operations. The funding is going to look a little different as well. And we're going to have to have systems in place to be able to capture the minutes of instruction that we're to provide. You know, one thing we've been talking about with the Texas Education Agency is what does 75,000 minutes of instruction look like when you don't have a teacher at home to teach? And so, those are some things that we're going to have to be very creative about. They do think that the backend, that the stopgap is that there will be testing, there will be assessment, and that there will be A through F accountability at the end of this year. So, here we go. Summer programs are in full force. Rose City Summer Camp, along with our summer meals programs, are operational. Rose City Summer Camps, last week, hovering around 600 students of participation at our four middle school locations. Remember, that's Hubbard, Three Lakes, Moore. And this year, we added Bolter, actually added Hubbard and Bolter this year. They've done an admirable job of being creative in observance of the current guidelines and standards that were released about summer camps and summer schooling. Six feet apart, all the things that we've grown accustomed to and to love in regard to trying to fight off this virus. Summer school will begin in mid-July as a kickoff and lead up to the return of school. Those sites will be posted and announced once the logistics are solidified. While we have done a good job of recovering the academic performance of once struggling schools over the last six years, we're still concerned and we're targeting campuses where our heaviest risk loads are for kids to slip. We realize even the high achievers may have not benefited from this closure of our schools the last three years, but we're certainly targeting the students and the pockets of our school system to where we have traditionally had struggles. So, we want to make sure we give them a little boost before we get them back into school. The great thing about the standards and guidelines was kind of a surprise to me, what, last week, that those are just recommendations. Okay, they were not conveyed to us early on as being recommendations. So, when it was, when it used to be cheaper to take Uber to get to summer school as opposed to school district transportation, there was no way we were going to be able to have summer school. But since those are just recommendations, we're going to practice very safe and precautionary things on our school buses and our school system. So, we're hoping to run transportation, to run routes for summer school. Looking at SIOs, they're shaking their head. That's good. Very, very excited about that. Again, middle of July, kind of a kickoff as a lead up to the school, return to school. I'm sure parents will be very happy for that to happen. On the second page, we're talking about the preparation for our return for school year 2021 and our BLADE system. So, BLADE is something you're going to be listening to. That's our acronym for Blended Learning and Distance Education. Got to give everything a name in education. So, BLADE, it's kind of a cool, techy name. So, that's what we're going to call it. All right? Everybody got it? BLADE. All right, they just heard about that today, or just now, actually. What's in that package? It's one-to-one student-teacher devices, it's the expansion of our district Wi-Fi access points, both on and off district property. That's evolving. I'm making a plea again online. Contact our community, or here in public, contact our communications department if you would like to partner with us in regard to helping us maybe boost some Wi-Fi at your business or maybe your church. What we're finding out is a lot of our churches based in the rural sections of our community don't have internet access. We're not going to bring internet access to you, but if you've already got internet access, we would love to partner with you to maybe boost some, some of the Wi-Fi at your, at your site. We're also training our faculty and staff on, that's gaining some momentum as well in regard to getting familiar with our Canvas, which is our, our learning management system, our LMS. And so, we're excited about that. Artists are starting to take shape at our campuses, along with here at the Plowler Instructional Complex or Plowler Complex. Again, in July, you'll actually have a larger glance because we'll present something to you in regard to what the BLADE is going to look like, along with what those teacher standards are going to look like, full obligations for seat time for students. I talked to you about the minutes there. What our direct instructional delivery is going to look like inside of our classrooms, the participation in, of students at home if they choose that path. And then, yes, feedback and grading standards along with attendance at test station. It's not going to be the same old, same old. You come in, we're going to take attendance second period, and the teacher with their eyes and the principals with their eyes on those students for an entire day count as your attendance. That will be the case for in-school instruction. But for out-of-school instruction, we will have some things, so the blending, the distance learning off the BLADE, some of that will have to be, will look a little bit different. Contact your local legislators and tell them that we will certainly do our very best to have school and meet their standards next year as well. UIL activities and summer workouts have begun. Y'all are very familiar that that's happening. Both high schools have seen tremendous participation for football as well as fall sports. Are middle school students allowed? We do have middle school students participating as well. Your normal camps for the young kids, your elementary-age kids probably aren't going to be able to happen this year. Is that, it doesn't look that way. So, we hate that that's not going to happen, but we're very blessed to be able to get our middle school and our high school students and student athletes engaged with extracurricular activities, not just athletics, but with band as well. Sandy, what are we, with band, anything going on right now? What's the target date for that? Late July, early August, 10 feet of separation right now? Is that the recommendation? Indoor, outdoor, 6 feet, 10 feet? It's going to be, it's going to be a challenge. But again, they're recommendations. We do appreciate the UIL allowing us to have our time with our students. We're doing our very best to keep the virus at bay while we go through this. Y'all have seen in the paper, we've had some of these issues throughout East Texas in regard to people having to kind of close down a little bit. And we've had some concerns and some things pop up as well, being fully transparent, but we haven't gotten to the point where we have to shut something down. My last bullet, this is something that every year we just kick ourselves about. Staffing vacancies are in good shape. We have four at Lee and one at John Tyler. I think that's an indication that leadership and at those campuses, along with our HR staff, are prioritizing hiring good people before the summer break. And so, I want to commend Mr. Lane, Dr. Crawford, they're here tonight, along with Mr. Jones and his shop of HR, of making sure that we get, we're getting people hired. But guys, one at JT, that's, that's a phenomenal, phenomenal thing. We always want to be hired, fully hired up before we break for July 4th, and we always have the last-minute surprises, but I love giving y'all good news. So, that's my, that's the end of my COVID, 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 COVID report. Any questions from any of the trustees that I can help answer or have somebody answer?
Everybody good on that? Okay, yeah, it's a good report.
Okay.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, I do look forward to going back to school. And I know my wife does too. Okay. Well, on to future business. We have July 16th, the Bochiers graduation, one of my favorite days of the year. If you can make it, you need to go. And then, on July 20th, we have our next regular meeting. We do not have a workshop typically in July, so the regular meeting is the next on the agenda for right now. So, okay, may I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, we are adjourned. All right.